Uh, hearing. Um. Better wait till they go on here.
We're all set, Joe.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Lunenburg ZBA. I just will tell you how the procedure will go for the hearing. First, I have to give you a notification. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the board. This is Lisa Normandin, our board secretary. I'm Al Gravell. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winter, Paul Doherty, David Blatt, and our newest member, Robert Cadel, which I would...
Cadel, yeah. Cadel, yeah.
Cadel, uh, yeah. And I'd like to welcome him to the board.
Thank you.
Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity to, for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, and board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have of the applicant while he is at the mic. There will be a public comment period, and if you would like to comment, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberation. And at this point, I'm actually gonna have Lisa read it, and then I'm gonna explain one thing at the end, but if you could please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation. The name and address of the applicant's, Granite Realty Trust, John Esposito and David Pajari, trustees, 104 Page Street in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows: Seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to allow for less than the required minimum frontage, 5121C, which allows 50 feet of frontage as allowed in Section 83214. An application for the same dated 10/31/17 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached herein. The proposed action has not begun. The street address of the property is 22 Boucher Road in Lunenburg. The assessor's map 9, parcel 37. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is John H. Esposito, trustee of the Granite Realty Trust, 104 Page Street in Lunenburg. The deed is required in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 8811, page 79, recorded May 5, 2017. The special permit questions are as follows: A, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, A, this is a single-family home, no traffic congestion, it is on a dead-end street. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the land, on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood, or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The response, this is a single-family home, is selling for... This is a single-family home, selling in the $400,000 price range and will be an asset to the neighborhood. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use? The response, a family home. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply, this is not going to be an issue. There are no adverse effects to the neighborhood, there will be no, there will be, there will not be any odor, heat, or glare at adjacent properties. Closest neighbor is 300-plus feet away. And that is signed November 9, 2017, by John Esposito of 64 Hollis Road and David Pajari of 104 Page Street in Lunenburg. There is a letter, um, there are minutes from the planning board that are highlighted regarding this property. It's known here as 925 Chase Road. Plan presented by Ed Boucher, PLS, an A&R plan endorsed in 1980, shows 50.2 feet of frontage for 22 Boucher Road. This is incorrect. There are only 28.46 feet of frontage. This plan will create parcel A to deed the property owner to create the required frontage on Chase Road to make this lot buildable, and the plan was endorsed. There is also a list of abutters attached with a map, the property record card from the assessor's office, and there is a site plan.
Did you want me to read Gary's letter?
Um, no. Instead of doing that...
There is one more memo.
There's one memo I received from Matt Morrow, the conservation administrator. This applicant has been, has been issued permission to construct the single-family home as proposed. This was before the building, this was before the building commissioner ruled on the access. If allowed to proceed, no further action from the commission is necessary as the impacts have been analyzed. If there is a change of access, the applicant must refile with the commission as the impacts would be more substantial, and the approval cannot be amended as a result. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I'm actually, before I ask the applicant to step forward, I would actually, Gary Rhodes, the building commissioner, I see that, he's here, he had addressed the letter as well. I'm gonna have him come up and actually address that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Gary Rhodes, I'm the building commissioner. I'd like to take an opportunity, just briefly, to explain that I actually had written two letters to the board, and the, one of the, my first letter was saying that I felt they would need to apply for a variance in order to, not to have access through Chase Road because the frontage, you have to have access through your frontage to your building site. After further review, I felt that they could also have applied for a special permit. The special permit would be easier findings for the board to make and for the applicant to try to apply for. That's why I ended up revising my letter to say that while the applicant can approach it from either direction, you know, my recommendation would be applies, approach it as a special permit so that the, the board has a, you know, less stringent requirements for them to apply for. If you have any questions, I'll, I can answer them, or I can wait until further as you see fit.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you. And with that, I, I agree that we should be hearing this, and I believe it was also advertised, as a, a special permit for dimensional variation. So if the board would agree with that...
I'll make a motion to that, okay?
Back into the motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That is, we're listening to it as a variance for a special, a special permit. And with that, I would invite the applicant to come up and add anything that he would like to.
Um, I mentioned just a minute ago that, uh, my name is Richard Larkin, I'm a lawyer...
You, you have to please come up to the mic.
Sure. I'm just gathering up my stuff here.
Can you hear me better this way?
Well, people down can't hear you.
Okay. Um, the, the reason I stepped out in the hallway with my clients is because I was telling them I thought they needed more than a special permit, and I was going to be asking the board, I was telling them I thought they needed a variance and a special permit together, and I was going to be asking this board to continue the hearing on this special permit matter until a time when, in the meantime, they could file for the variance and then hear the two together. But if I, if I understand what the building inspector just told the board, it may not be necessary for me to do that. So I'll try to explain in the simplest terms what I was talking about, and in that regard, I'm asking, do you all have copies of the petition as it was filed?
Yes.
So I think I know what's in there, and, uh, first of all, I'd like to mention that the, the applicant owns an oddly shaped parcel of land, it's a big back piece. He owns a strip that runs up to Chase Road, and at Chase Road it has 100 feet of frontage, but it also has an arm that goes 90 degrees from that and fronts on Boucher Road. And, uh, in fact, there are two surveyed plans that I know of, of record, that show that particular piece of, of the parcel. One of them was done in 1980, and it shows the frontage of that contact on Boucher Road at 50 feet, and an inch or two, or something like that, but 50-point-something. Then in 2016, uh, the Munyons had another plan done, which included, among other things, the strip that runs up to Chase Road. That showed the frontage on Boucher Road at something like 29.48, 46 feet. So the question arises, how did that happen? And it's not uncommon for, you know, somebody's version of where one boundary picks up and where another one leaves off to be a little fluid, and when surveyors create their plans, I mean, surveyors would tell you, uh, their job, when they're doing surveyed plans of existing parcels, their job is to put the boundaries where they really are on the ground, and you don't always have, you know, stakes and drill holes in rocks and stuff. Sometimes you have to be pretty clever to figure out where they are. So I have not had an opportunity to look into it and figure out how the thing went from 50 feet to 29 feet. But I did look into it in a preliminary way, and one thing would be, um, I'm looking right now at the 2016 plan, and that shows the parcel that adjoins my client's parcel and makes up, well, it's not actually on Boucher Road, but it is between Boucher Road and my client's parcel going away from Chase Road, okay? That parcel of land, the, the, I think up, up until somewhat recently, it was in the ownership of some people named Peterson. There was a Harold Peterson and then a Harold Peterson, Jr. And the deed that they got ultimately was created in 1941. There is no plan of that parcel, and the description is not too bad, but it's not specific measurements, distances, and so forth. So my guess is that when a competent surveyor surveys that parcel, and then the surveyor goes up to Chase Road and surveys down the other way, and then you measure what's left, turns out it's 29 feet, even though in 1980, another surveyor showed it as 50 feet. I'm guessing that that's the case. The point is that if it were 50 feet, um, we wouldn't need to be here. You could go in on the 50 feet, I believe, that's what the bylaw calls for. On the other hand, and this is odd, too, my clients got their deed, um, in 2017, and the description in the deed referred to the 1980 plan, which said 50 feet. So they could say, well, we do have 50 feet, it's right here on this plan, but, you know, you, you may have a deed that says you have 50 feet, but if it turns out the person who sold it to you didn't own the 50 feet, you're in trouble. I can't resolve those questions here, so tonight, I'm gonna treat the matter as though it's 29 feet. So that's one thing. The second thing is, if it is the case that the building inspector has revised his view that you have to come in on the Chase Road frontage, it, the, when I told you that I was telling my clients we needed more time to file for a variance, it was that we would have had to get a variance to allow them to access from Boucher Road instead of Chase Road, if that's what the law says, and the case would have been based on, yeah, we have frontage on Chase Road, but you can't get through it because there's a brook going through it, and that is a good case for a variance. They're supposed to be based on hardships that are based on conditions on the ground, and that's certainly a condition on the ground. You can't do it because our lot is different, it's got this brook going through it, everybody else doesn't have that. That's the classic case for a variance. If we don't have to do that, and do I understand that you, sir, are saying that you, you now believe it is possible to come through Boucher Road if all other things can be met?
By special.
By the special permit? Yeah.
Yes, I believe that by special permit, it would be a dimensional...
Yeah.
...special permit for redu, reduction, less than the 50 feet would allow you to then have access through the reduced frontage area.
Mm-hmm.
Where on Chase, you don't have the ability to access it, while you have a dimensional condition, you can't meet the two parts...
Right.
...two parts to it. This way, the board, which is what I talked about earlier, has that ability of a special permit to give dimensional, then you are, you've met the one requirement, which is access. I don't think you can get a special permit for access off of Chase, that would be a variance.
Right, okay. I, I understand. All right, then. So I just got my clients all excited, and it turns out we are gonna be able to go, go ahead tonight. So, um, on that basis, and assuming that the board is willing to, and I, I mentioned to you that my client's deed recites the plan that shows 50 feet. Nevertheless, I think you have a copy of the 2016 plan by ironically someone named Boucher, I don't think there's any connection, a surveyor from Royalston. Do you have that in there?
Yes.
So on, then we can refer to that. We will assume that it's, uh, 2846, I guess, is the actual number, and in that respect, excuse me, I, I then refer to, if you take that to be the condition of, of the property that we're coming in with, I would then refer to Section 8.3 of the zoning bylaw, which indicates the powers of the zoning board of appeals, and one of them is, this would be Section B2D, uh, the right to grant a special permit to vary the dimensional requirements upon a determination that, making the exception, would not create undesirable conditions caused by overshadowing, I don't think there's any question of that, or loss of privacy, that access to utility and public services will be adequate, and, um, that the dimensional conditions of the lot will not be different from other lots in the area. And, uh, the standards that have to be applied by the board, the findings have to be made are that the special permit can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Now, this is a special permit, they're pulling that right from the variance statute, but I think it applies here, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. In this case, the intent and purpose of the bylaw would be to provide reasonable, safe access to a, in this case, residential lot, and doing so without in, uh, imposing upon, disrupting the privacy or other legitimate interests of a butters. And, uh, I believe it's possible to do that. The, the, a little avenue there, the corridor that leads into the buildable part of the lot is slightly over 100 feet in length, and it would come in from Boucher Road. There appears to be adequate width for all the necessities, and I believe the available building location is toward the back of the main part of the lot, that would be away As I mentioned, the, uh, in this case, the, the result, if you allowed this special permit, would be to make the lot available for a residential building, and that situation would have to be compatible with the existing neighborhood. I think it speaks for itself in that regard. And C is similar, it cannot adversely affect the neighborhood, and the granting of the special permit would not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, and so forth. No nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. I don't think there's any issue about that. It's a fairly flat, level area, it's straight on, the sighting, the distances on either side are more than adequate, and it's really just a simple driveway, and I would say there's plenty of room for it, even though the lot in that particular section doesn't have the full 50-foot width. That's essentially the case.
Okay, thank you.
If there are any details about the specific conditions, we'd be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will open up questions to the board.
Uh, first question. When I look at the map that you have that lists, um, the abutters list, something, and I look at the whiteout area that shows the lot and the ingress from Boucher Road, I notice there's a little coloration of what appears to be the McMill, McWilliams House in the corner, like there's a shed or something in the very far corner.
Yes.
Would that affect anything relative to the boundaries, and would that create problems for the, uh, for the applicants in building for having this as an access road?
Well, I would say, I, I viewed the lot the other day, I guess it was yesterday when we had the snow on the ground, but I walked in there with John Esposito, and, um, it did not appear to me that there is a shed not too far away. It seems to be a shed serving the residents there that's much closer to Boucher Road, and, uh, it doesn't appear to me that there'd be any imposition on the use of the shed or, or any question of safety whereby the shed is too close to the traveled way. There's a reasonable distance there, it's just a back shed in the corner of a lot. So I wouldn't think it was a problem. I would say there are probably sheds and garages and what have you in the neighborhood in general that are, are at least as close to vehicular traffic as this would be to any driveway traffic up that strip.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So did you, were you aware of, of the planning board minutes regarding this particular, this particular property, and they consider it 925 Chase Road? Was dated, the minutes were dated October 24, 2016. It seems to me, from reading the minutes of the planning board, prior to the October 24, 2016 meeting, they didn't consider this building lot buildable, and that was the reason why parcel A was deeded over to this property.
Would you give me a minute?
Sure.
I do have those.
It was in part of, it was part of the package that we got.
Yep, yep, and I had it here.
And they were discussing A&R plans, and it was the first A&R plan on the, on the agenda.
This would be minutes of October 24, 2016?
Correct.
Yep.
And if you look under A&R plans, it says 925 Chase Road. So they acknowledged that in 1980, sort of similar to what you said, that it showed 50 feet of frontage on 22 Boucher Road, uh, but that was incorrect, and that there's really only 28.46 feet of frontage. This plan will create parcel A to deed to the property owners to create the required frontage on Chase Road to make this lot buildable. So to me, from reading that, it sounds like the planning board also agreed that prior to the parcel A being over to this property...
I think...
...that it's a buildable lot.
Well, as I read this, um, here's what it says, I mean, you have it in front of you, but it appears to me that this surveyor, Ed Boucher, who I don't think he's related to the name Boucher Road, but, um, I believe from reading this that he must have originally presented a plan, um, that showed the frontage of the lot on Boucher Road at 50 feet, 50-point-something feet, because there was already a plan from 1980 that showed it as 50 feet. I don't know how that came about, but at that time, a surveyor, um, you know, did what surveyors do and came up with 50 feet. Sometimes what they do is look at previous plans and pick up on it, but, um, someone seemed to be aware that, notwithstanding that it said, here it is right here, 50.02 feet. So even though the existing plan showed 50.02 feet, someone was aware that there really aren't that many feet of frontage on Boucher Road, that if you understand where everybody's boundary is, it's not 50 feet, and I would say that Boucher, the surveyor, must have gone back and gotten, and made it 28.46. And I would say this opinion of the planning board had to do with the fact that it doesn't meet the requirement of the bylaw, but we're here to remedy that.
Let me ask you this. So the building, the, the planning board, recognizing that it wasn't a buildable lot at 28 feet on Boucher Road, then granted the parcel A for the 100-feet frontage on Chase Road for the Munyons to have access to their property via Chase Road?
Yes, and then, um, this gentleman here, whose name keeps slipping my mind, I'm sorry about that, the older you get, the less you remember, um, uh, that, that letter suggested that, in fact, you needed to come across Chase Road, but since then, he has revised his opinion and has decided that if you can't come through Chase Road because it's got the brook in the way, which I think is what was being discussed, you can come in Boucher Road if you can get this special permit. So that's his opinion, and it would, in effect, nullify the opinion of the planning board.
Has the conservation commission, uh, do we have anything to the effect that you, you can't access, uh, that parcel A from Chase Road to your, your client's property?
Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't had any direct contact with them, but my client, Mr. Esposito, tells me that they have told him in no uncertain terms that they would not authorize that, and just based on experience, I would be very surprised if a conservation commission would permit that. I mean, I could conceive of what they call a crossing being done, uh, the conservation commission would have a great deal of discretion about it, and what I'm told by my client is they're not very enthusiastic about it, and I think maybe their point of view would be if there's an alternate access through a public way, use it, and why go, why do, do this business with the brook? That's probably their opinion.
And I can address that a little bit. I will tell you that I did talk to Mark, I went there. Of course, they did send a, a letter, and part of it is, is it says, where they had issued permission to construct the single-family home as proposed. This was before the building commissioner ruled on the access. So at that time, he to, he had said that, they had already looked at the brook and determined that that was, that there was excessive wetlands, and if you, I don't know if you viewed the property, I went there myself, there is a brook that comes right down through there. I noticed, too, if you go up Boucher Road, that there is a drive there. Um, I'm not gonna say it's a drive, but then, the access...
Yeah, I did see that.
...road is there. So I think that, judging from this, my conversation, they were aware of the excessive wetlands and, and had, um, gone forward, that it based on Boucher Road, not on coming up through Chase.
I don't have any further questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Paul?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Dave?
So I, I guess my question is, when they, when the, the Bunyons went to purchase the property, their deed, you're saying their deed showed that there was 50 feet on Boucher Road?
Well, that's odd. Just to clarify the thing, the, the sellers in the deed, the grantors, were Christopher Munyon and I think probably his wife. Right. Uh, two of them. And the purchaser was a trust, of which these two gentlemen are the trustees.
Mm-huh.
And when that deed was produced, which was 2017, uh, the old 1980 plan, which is the one that shows 50 feet, uh, was in place, but in the meantime, after having gone through this business that we've just been discussing, there was now a 2016 plan in place, which gave you a slightly different version of the property in terms of dimensions, and was specifically aimed at being the basis of... of selling a building lot and kind of bailing out the lack of frontage on Chase Road of 100 feet. So that was the whole purpose, and the planning board commented on it. So what I would have expected is they then would give the deed off the new plan, but no, the deed came off the 1980 plan. So I don't know why that would have been done. I don't want to impute an error to somebody else besides myself, but I think that was a mistake. I think somebody picked up the wrong description. It's easy to type something into a deed and record it, and you can't unrecord it, you know? So I think that's what happened. So then it becomes, the fellow's got a deed, shows 50 feet of frontage, but maybe there isn't 50 feet there, because maybe when you go out there and bang in the stakes, they're 28.46 feet apart.
I guess, I guess my question for you is, have you gone, has anybody ever gone back and to find out why this discrepancy happened? Is it because somebody on one of the other deeds, let's call it the McWilliams, made a mistake, and there's your 50, there's your 25 feet that you're looking for? I'm just asking because it's looking to me like I'm questioning why there's a plan in 1980 in place, which is saying that there is 50 feet, and what changed between that, those two times? And that's what I'm asking is, isn't that part of one of the things that happen when you go to purchase property, is you kind of have somebody that is looking out for you for this?
You know, the answer is yes, and I'll.
And why have they said that?
No, well, I would say this. I've been examining titles to real estate as a lawyer for over 40 years. And I've told several surveyors that I know that in my next life, I'm going to be a surveyor, and I, I'm given to going through the woods and finding old stones that point in a certain direction and stuff. But I'm not a surveyor, and I honestly don't really fully understand what they do. There's a lot of math involved that is over my head, okay? But I do know this. It is not unusual for a plan to appear, and it, well, let me put it this way, it's not unusual for two surveyors to have different opinions of where the boundaries ought to be. Because if you read as many deeds as I have, you find out that some of them are right down to three decimal places on the inch, and some of them are vague, and they're talking about people who have been dead for 120 years, and, you know, you get, I remember, there's a famous deed that some surveyor showed me that takes the corner to a hole in the ice. Well, you know, you can only survey it in the winter. You know, I mean, apparently, a hole showed up every year in a certain spot, so, so you run into that. So here's what I think happened. I, my guess is, I, I started out with this, and I don't know if I told you too much or what. As I told you, the, the property that lies between the bulk of my client's property and Boucher Road, which I said for a while belonged to some people named Peterson, I think it belongs to other people now, that actually does not have frontage all along the length of Boucher Road, even though it's about 500 feet long in that direction, because it has a much shorter piece of frontage on Boucher, and then there's a tiny strip that separates it from Boucher. This is the abutting property. But the, the, the description, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the description of it that controls all the ownership coming forward was created in 1941. I did look that up.
Uh huh.
And it's not a bad description as you go. When you look at these old deeds, you know, you wonder, some of them are vague as anything, and some of them are extremely precise, and you get everything in between. And as I mentioned, the surveyors have the problem of taking this and figuring out what to do. And I know some surveyors that are extremely conscientious will go far from the property and pick up something that they absolutely know what it is and where it is, and they will carry it all the way down to get to this place. And so what I think happened is that you had this 1941 description, which became a major player, and that comes up toward Chase Road. And then you have property from Chase Road coming back down the other way, and in between them, there's a strip of land into my client's property, which in 1980, some surveyor thought was 50 feet wide, with 50 feet on Boucher Road. More recently, namely 2016, some other surveyor, named Boucher, surveyed it and came up with 28.46 feet. You could ask them, how'd you do that? And it sounds like from those planning board minutes, someone, you know, apprised them of it based on something. And it's possible, if I looked further into the record, I'd find that. It could be it's stuff that's already on the record, I just haven't been in it long enough to look into it. But that's what I think happened. You have two different opinions of what the frontage is, and somebody thinks 28.46 is the correct one. So it turns out you didn't get what you thought you were getting, and these two gentlemen here got a deed a year after the presumably better updated plan was created, but whoever put the deed together used the old, presumably obsolete description. They said, here's the property, north, south, east, and west, blah, blah. It's shown on record in the plan 1980. So it's, it's out of date.
I'm going to break in for one minute. We did have another hearing scheduled at 7:30, and then I will ask your indulgence to, the petition is here, I take it. And I'm just asking that you'll let us continue with this hearing. And we will, we will open your hearing as soon as this is over. Is that agreeable? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm probably talking too much, but I simply want to say, for the purpose of this hearing, my clients are willing to accept the short frontage, 28.46, even though their deed says they have 50. But, you know, you could spend an awful lot of money and have the land court tell you, you know, it's 28.46. For the purpose of this hearing, they'll go with the 28.46. They'd like to put a driveway access there. And as I look at the criteria that the bylaw sets up, it seems to me that it's quite doable. But of course, that's up to you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have questions. Maybe it's of the board, I'm not sure. But, so the driveway has to come out through the, the frontage. So it's got to come out at either the 28 feet or on Chase Road. How, how wide is, is this driveway?
Have to be at least 12 feet.
At least 12?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So you're going to like six feet on each side, say?
It would be eight. You'd have 12 out of 28, you get 16, eight feet on either side.
Oh, okay.
If you went straight up the middle. And it's pretty level.
Yeah, I was up there.
Has anything been done, Mr. Locken, to look at swapping that piece of property, the 28-foot, to the other side of the McWilliams' property and asking for an easement or something that could come in with it would be land sufficiently to, or even add to it at that end, where it's not as close to the house, for an easement to grant the 50-foot?
When you say the other side, do you mean the?
The very other.
The back end?
The back end of that property on Boucher Road, which if you look at your map, it says, it's out Kristin, Kristin A. in the area, McWilliams. You go all the way to their end of their property.
You're talking about the plan from?
Goes right into the Munions' property.
Yes, yeah, this one here, yeah.
Is anything?
I, I don't know of any such thing. I would say that, again, I.
Is it unbuildable at that point? You know, that might be another consideration.
Well, I couldn't really speak to that, but one problem would be, this plan seems to show between the bulk of the McWilliams' property and Boucher Road, there seems to be a little sliver of a no-man's-land kind of a thing. I don't know anything about that. I don't think the plan addresses it. So the McWilliams' property seems to have frontage of 61 and a fraction feet.
Okay, I didn't notice that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it seems to me there would be.
That's what I was thinking.
Plus, I noticed, if you traveled just a little bit, I think it was 32 Boucher Road, which is the next house, that abuts that driveway, there's, there's more wetlands up there.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I have no other questions.
Mr. Chairman, it just seems to me that.
Tonight, we're going to decide, is 28.645 a word of number is enough to give them a special permit to put a driveway through? That's kind of the bottom line.
That is correct. That, in my opinion, is the bottom line. You have two things. You can go Chase Road, but there is a brook there. So you have excessive wetlands on that entrance. On this entrance, you have the issue where it's 28-point whatever.
Instead of 50.
And it's instead of 50. So, you know, and tonight, because we did decide that, we would do the special permit, we're talking about the 28 from Boucher Road.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special.
Public comment.
Yeah, yeah, we have to have a public comment. There's no more questions. We will open it up to public comment. Anybody that would like to come up and speak to the, the applicant, so the application? Let me have this gentleman first. Give you a name and address, and please address the board.
Sure. My name is Curtison McWilliams, and I live at 32 Boucher Road. And at the, with the property back there, I don't really feel like the, I don't feel like there is a lot of privacy after all the woods have been taken down. I don't think that it's, basically, there's a house right in our, going to be right in our, you know, living room. Could just see it right out the back windows. The driveway that was put in, it's half of my driveway, at least if the 28 feet is to be believed. And, yeah, that's really all. Just wanted to bring that up. I'm not sure if that's relevant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Would anybody else like to speak?
May I address that comment, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
I just want to mention that my clients advised me that the, the house location on their lot is approximately 300 feet from this gentleman's lot. Once you get into my client's lot through the 28-foot corridor, the building site is then well to the back of his lot, and this gentleman's house is close to the driveway entrance, in the vicinity of that shed that was mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, I'm John Esposito, Hollis Road. I just wanted to clarify that the, the brook that goes through off of Chase Road is a brook that snakes through. So if you could go through there, which you can't because it's a perennial brook, and you can't, the state won't let you go near a perennial brook. You'd have to cross it in more than one place, which Mr. Merrill told me it's just impossible. They won't let you do it, and you can't do it. And the other thing, I believe, I couldn't hear Mr. McWilliams very well, but he said something about my driveway goes through his driveway. Well, his land, my, his driveway goes through my piece of land, not, not vice versa. He's got a circular driveway that comes up in front of his house, from the left-hand side of his house, circles around in front of his house, and comes back down on the other side and cuts through my driveway. So he's encroaching on my property, not the other way around.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? With that, I'll cut off public discussion, and I will bring it to the board, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit for the.
Dimensional variation.
Dimensional variation to allow the 28 to 29-foot driveway.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
By the way.
He is, he's going to be.
Okay. Dave, you're not voting?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to clarify.
Oh, all right. Anyway.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second to the motion, so I will take a vote.
Can I just say something? I, I don't, so, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a classic case of, so here's my opinion on this. The reason that they put parcel A in place is because the applicant's piece of property doesn't have, it was not a buildable lot at 28 feet. So I think, you know, voting in favor of it nullifies the, the intent of the bylaw. And, you know, the reason that they, they don't want these pork chop shops, I mean, no one's built on it thus far. In 2016, you know, the planning board rectified the issue of a non-buildable lot, making it buildable by Chase Road. So that's my, that's my perspective. I, I think that if they're going to build, if this lot's going to be buildable, I think that they should build it from Chase Road. I haven't seen anything from the Conservation Commission saying that they can't do it. I just, I, I don't feel confident and comfortable voting for, in favor of it, based on the fact that they have 28 feet and the minimum requirement is 50 feet. That's the bylaw. So, and to be honest, I mean, the plan was changed in 2016. This, the applicant purchased the property in 2017. So, I mean, there was a good five or six months from when the, the planning board endorsed the plan to when the applicant purchased the property. So that's, that's my thought on it.
All right, thank you. Okay, but there is a motion, a second, so I'll call for a vote on that motion.
Aye.
No.
All right.
Aye.
Aye. With that, it is, it is carried in a four-to-one decision. So the special permit has been granted. And with that, there's one more thing I have to read. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances, and any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. No compliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. Copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded with the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. And this special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I think that's a little bit. I have to give you a minute to set up.
There was one problem on 1980. It's at 50.
No, because if you look.
I, I don't know. But that's what I'm saying.
At some, at some point, somebody definitely.
50 foot.
Well, I mean, he got the deed, but he should have said, he showed us the 1980 plan.
Yeah.
Here.
This is what we were going on.
Right.
The conservation committee, if we turn it around, there would have been the next step.
It's my.
Okay, and with that, we will open up the second hearing. And first, again, I will just give a few notifications. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I will introduce the members. Lisa Normandin is the board secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, Dave Blatt, and Robert Cadel. And what we will do, Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity to comment on the application or submission of additional documents. Again, you come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the applications while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period, and then the board will go into deliberations. And with that, I will ask Lisa to please read the petition.
This is a petition for variance from the terms of the zoning bylaw, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant, Ecological Fibers, Inc., forty Pioneer Drive in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. Section six-four-three-B-two. The number of driveway permitting entrance to and exit from a lot shall be limited to two per street line. The applicant proposes three access points, two existing, one new off Pioneer Drive. An application for the same was dated October twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. Proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the zoning bylaw, Section six-four-three-B-two. The number of driveway permitting entrance to and exit from a lot shall be limited to two per street line. The street address is forty Pioneer Drive, Assessors Map one forty-six, Parcel twenty-two and twenty-four. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Quill Lunenburg Realty LLC, four oh five George Hill Road in Lancaster, Mass. And the deed is recorded in Wister Northern District Registry of Deeds Book eight zero eight seven, page one eight three, and recorded March third, two thousand and fourteen. The special permit questions are as follows. Circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally the zoning district in which it is located, are, under reply, the project site is a wider north-to-south than it is deeper east-to-west lot, with nine hundred and sixty-two feet of frontage on Pioneer Drive and three hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage on Lemmonstir Shirley Road, and with an average depth of the lot being approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet, an average width of the lot being approximately one thousand and seventy-five feet. Because the lot is in the shape of a long rectangle, the building is required to be of a similar shape. To provide optimal operations within the building, i.e. minimizing the distance from the stored product to the loading docks, it would be beneficial to have two sets of loading docks, one on each end of the building, thus creating the need for two separate driveways to service the respective loading docks. In an attempt to improve the safety for the employees, the third driveway was proposed to separate the truck traffic from the employee traffic. In addition, the third entrance will provide for easier access for emergency vehicles. B, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the undersigned for the following reasons. When investigating the proposed building, the proposed addition to the building, the applicant investigated a number of other properties, not in the town of Lunenburg or in Massachusetts, or even in the northeast region. The applicant determined that this region would still be the best location for the Ecological Fibers business. However, if the variance is not granted for the third access point off of Pioneer Drive, and if the applicant determines that the operation of the building with only the two points of access is not beneficial, the applicant may be forced to look at their options, which would cause a financial hardship on the applicant. C, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons. As stated previously, the applicant has frontage on Lemmonstir Shirley Road. The applicant has investigated the possibility of accessing the third driveway from Lemmonstir Shirley Road. This driveway would service the new loading docks and add truck traffic directly onto Lemmonstir Shirley Road between Lancaster Avenue and Pioneer Drive, two busy intersections. Instead, the applicant believes the proposal with the third access off Pioneer Drive would be a safer location, approximately six hundred feet from the intersection of Pioneer Drive and Lemmonstir Shirley Road, providing adequate site distance and exiting onto a road with lower speed limits. D, the variance desired may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Under reply, during the site plan review process with the planning board, the proposal with the third entrance was discussed with the board, and they were in favor of the third entrance. The planning board was a local authority who had moved for the changes in the Lunenburg zoning bylaws to include the restriction of only two access points on each street that a lot fronted on. The board felt like that due to the unique site characteristics and the location of the property, that the granting of a variance in this particular case would not be in conflict with their intent on getting the regulation changed to its current state. If you should have any questions or require any additional information regarding this or any of the matter, please do not hesitate to contact me at this office. And that's signed Wesley F. Fliss, project engineer from Whitman and Bingham Associates. The application is signed by Stephen F. Quill of four oh five George Hill Road in Lancaster, Mass. There is a list of abutters attached with a site plan, a field card from the assessors' office, and a set of plans that were submitted with the application. I've also received several correspondence that I will read. This one's from the Lunenburg Fire Department, dated November twenty-eighth. Dear Mr. Gravel, I am writing to recommend the ZBA approve the request for the variance at forty Pioneer Drive Ecological Fibers. This is in regard to having a total of three driveways to their facility as part of a major renovation. In my opinion, retaining the existing driveway in addition to the new driveway will provide the following benefits. See attached site drawing for further explanation. One, without the existing driveway, access to most of the building will be through the new driveway. As designed, the entranceway to the parking area is still very tight for fire apparatus. Two, maintaining the existing driveway provides much easier access to the fire department's sprinkler connections. It also allows us to use the existing hydrant on Pioneer Drive by the existing structure and will not require a hydrant to be added in the facility parking area. Three, maintenance of the existing driveway allows employee and visitor vehicles to enter and exit without intermingling with heavy truck traffic at the loading dock area. This would decrease the chances of an accident in an otherwise potentially congested area. The entrances to both existing driveways are far enough apart that I do not see any potential traffic conflicts from vehicles leaving simultaneously. As the sightlines are good from the existing driveway, and for the above reasons, I would recommend granting this variance. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Respectfully, Patrick A. Sullivan, Fire Chief. The Board of Health sent a memo saying they have no issues, and that's signed by James Gariffy, health agent. I have a letter here from the Gary Rhodes Building Commissioner. A question was asked by one of the Board of Appeals members if the petitioner owned adjoining properties. According to the abutters list prepared by the assessors' office, the petitioner owns Parcels twenty-two and twenty-four located on Town Map one forty-six, Parcel twenty-four fronts on Lemmonstir Shirley Road. I've also received a letter from the Lunenburg Planning Board, from Adam Burney, Land Use Director, dated December fifth. The planning board on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, approved the above-mentioned project under the Code of Lunenburg, Section four fifty dash four point seven, Office Park and Industrial District, and two fifty dash eight point four site plan approval. In the original submission, the applicant submitted a design that included retaining the two existing curb cuts and introducing a third to service the proposed loading docks at the north side of the property. The planning board agreed that functionally this design was the most appropriate, but was not permitted per Code of Lunenburg, Section two fifty dash six point four C two B. The approved design eliminates the existing driveway that serves the existing and proposed parking area adjacent to the entrance and funnels that traffic through the entrance originally dedicated for access to the loading dock. This design presents several challenges, including the co-mingling of passenger and transport traffic, ease of access for emergency vehicles, and potential conflict with the commercial use of Pioneer Drive. Individually and collectively, these items are not critical failures that would prevent the project from being successful. However, the introduction of the third driveway creates a more functional parking/loading area and provides separation of vehicular functions, passenger, and transport, significantly eliminating potential conflicts. The planning board supports Ecological Fibers, Inc.'s application for a variance and believes that proposed plan will best serve Lunenburg and the applicant. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you require any further information on this matter. Thank you for your time and attention. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
I see that the building commissioner is still here, and I just would like to ask if he would like to speak first, or if he would like to...
I'll just see if he has a question.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And with that, I will open it up to the applicant.
Good evening. Wesley Fliss, Whitman, I'm Bingham Associates. With me this evening is Stephen Quill from Ecological Fibers, and also from the landowner of the property. As Lisa had stated, the variance here is for the allowance of a third driveway out of the Pioneer Drive. And so what I'll quickly do is show you the project and what's out there now, or what was out there before construction started on the project. As the planning board stated in a letter, we do have an approval for the plan that's here. Existing before the construction occurred was the loading dock entrance here and also the second entrance here, which serviced the employee parking. As the new addition came in, the thought is to keep the two existing entrances and provide a third entrance. The plan that you see right now in front of you is what's approved by the planning board, only showing this, the left entrance, the southerly entrance, and the northerly entrance, which would service the new loading docks, but also the employee parking and visitor parking. This is not what we're obviously in front of you this evening, but I want to show you what was approved and under construction currently out on the site. What we're here this evening for is the variance for basically the third entrance, the middle entrance, which would service the employee parking and visitor parking, where the third new entrance would be mainly for the loading dock, the additional loading dock that's going to be proposed for the new part of the building. We're adding a little less than sixty-eight thousand square foot addition to the existing building that's out there now. Again, if you've been out to the site, you'll see the construction's underway, you'll see the size of the building and where the new entrance is to the right of the new building, where they've had a chance to pave the parking lot, so you can kind of see where everything sits out there now. Again, the way we look at this is that this third entrance being further enough apart from each other, and also further enough away from the intersection of Lemmonstir Shirley Road and Pioneer Drive, there's no safety issues with that third entrance, and also allows for a separation of, you know, the employee parking and the visitor parking from a lot of the loading traffic that will happen there. I know that was one of the questions also, and I can point out where the second lot is, that is owned by the landowner, is there's a second piece of property here that has frontage on Lemmonstir Shirley Road that was acquired by the landowner. And that's where, in our letter, we talked about the three hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage on Lemmonstir Shirley Road. And that's where we looked at, could we put another driveway out to Lemmonstir Shirley Road and still meet the zoning bylaw and not have this third entrance here out to Pioneer Drive? Yeah, there is that possibility, but we just didn't like the layout of that, that third entrance coming out to Lemmonstir Shirley Road between Pioneer Drive and Lancaster Ave. Just didn't, didn't look as better as an option as these three options here. And that was where that second parcel is that was acquired by the Quill property. Obviously, as part of this, you know, we'll expand the parking lot to meet the requirements. We're going to have a hundred parking spaces out there to service the development. We'll tie into the existing sewer and water out on the street. There is obviously improvements to the drainage system that will happen as part of this project. But again, the main purpose of tonight is for the variance for that third access. And I think the biggest thing that, you know, we tried getting in front of the rest of the boards, so we can get feedback from the rest of the boards, and obviously the fire department was one of the big items that we were trying to, you know, get that letter to you, showing that, you know, the support for them. And I can point out a couple of the items that they do bring up in their letter, just so you have a clarification. If the plan were to remain what's approved by the planning board currently, there is a hydrant out here on Pioneer Drive that the fire department would not have access to if there was a fire at the facility because there's no driveway connection. And so we'd have to put a new hydrant out. Also, the fire connections within the building are in this location here, basically the furthest point away from this, this access. And so that's why, again, the fire department was in support of having that middle driveway stay. It's a much quicker access point for them to come into where the connections are with regards to the fire connection along the building, but also this hydrant out on Pioneer Drive, they could still tie into it, and no new hydrant needs to be added on to the property. So from their standpoint, they like that option better. And then the last item they had to do is regards to circulation of the fire trucks coming through the site. If they came in one entrance, they can come out back the other entrance without having to turn around. Under the current option that's approved by the planning board, we had to add a turnaround area in the front of the building. So if they were to come in to the front of the building, they'd have to back their fire trucks up and then come back out, where, like I said, under the option that's in front of this board, they could loop the traffic right around through the two entrances. Again, we see it as an improvement from what's approved by the planning board. And again, like I said, the planning board is the board that changed the zoning bylaw to eliminate anything more than two entrances onto one street. But because of the site characteristics of this, it's a very long, narrow lot. We think that's in harmony of how really the intent of the bylaw is.
Good. Is that it? Thank you.
Yeah, pretty simple, I think, from the standpoint of why the variance is.
Okay, just a couple of clues. On the, on the truck traffic, now, I go by that every day, and on the, I'll call it the south end of the building.
Yep.
The loading docks are all there. I'm going to assume, is that the shipping area in this new section for the trucks? Is that going to be like a receiving area?
Did you hear that? Yeah, and so it's...
Yes.
I see.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Okay.
Just, I'm Stephen Quill. We've been here since nineteen eighty-five, and I like being in Lunenburg. I didn't quite hear all of it.
Well, what I, what I was asking was, I know that that's, I'll call it the south end there, the, the...
The loading docks.
Loading dock area. I was asking if this new section, the new docks that you're putting in, is that more for receiving and the other for shipping?
Ultimately, the plan is, the building's larger than we need substantially, but I figured this builds it up.
Well, that's good. You're planning on growth, new jobs.
This is the end of it. The upper docks, the ones to the right, will be used for receiving. That, that building is being pretty wide open, being built, and it will transfer ultimately all of the ship, all of the materials coming in to come in that way, go through the plant, or stored in there. We keep a lot of inventory in our company. Right now, we're renting twenty thousand square feet of twelve-foot-high storage. So ultimately, we will go through that upper dock that's in the new building, and it will come down and all shipped through the rear of the building, southern, and I guess pretty close, I should say, will be just used for shipping, finished goods.
Okay, they're saying they can't quite hear you, so if you could just speak a little higher.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
The, the, the building itself is larger than our current needs. However, this is the third time we're going to build, and I said it will be the last on the site. The ultimate plan is that everything will be received at the end where the new docks are being built, and everything will be shipped at the original building, which has six shipping docks plus waste transport and stuff. The requirement for the center driveway does two really main things. One, it's safer for our people, especially office workers, keeps them out of the way as from driving in off the new entranceway, down along through the parking, up into the parking area that would be the same on either way. So I don't think it's a great idea of having them going in, going around a curve, coming down, walking, passing back and forth, people coming in and going up, for efficiency and I think safety. The most important way is to bring your stuff in one area, store it, move it to manufacturing, make what you're making. The ultimate plan is that everything will be received at the end where the new docks are being built, and everything will be shipped at the original building, which has six shipping docks plus waste transport and stuff. The requirement for the center driveway does two really main things. One, it's safer for our people, especially office workers, keeps them out of the way as from driving in off the new entranceway, down along through the parking, up into the parking area that would be the same on either way. So I don't think it's a great idea of having them going in, going around a curve, coming down, walking, passing back and forth, people coming in and going up, for efficiency and I think safety. The most important way is to bring your stuff in one area, store it, move it to manufacturing, make what you're making, ship it, and out the door. But I also believe it's very, it's much safer.
Okay.
Anything else I can tell you?
With that, I will actually open it up to the board for questions.
Sure.
I have one question. Due to the length of the building, and you said where the location of the fire stand pipes are, are you going to put some down the other end by the loading dock in case a truck should accidentally catch fire and make it closer?
Majority of the connections are going to happen down at the same end of the building. The way the floor plans or the way the setup works, all the mechanicals are going to be on that, still the left-hand side of that building, so it's all going to be close to each other.
So that wouldn't be practical? You can see how long they'll have to lay pipe now if a truck should have to, should unfortunately...
Yeah, it wasn't something that the fire chief asked for either.
Didn't, okay.
I know they actually just were up there a couple days ago on the property.
Right.
And that's what I know, talking with the builder, that was one of the things that, you know, after they walked the property and saw the size of the building, the chief even was more excited about having this meeting because he wanted it to be prepared.
Okay, make sure, okay. Yeah, no, his letter impressed me, so that's what I was going to go with. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, was there a consideration to maybe widen the south side, the present shipping/loading area, and maybe making it so that that's the way the employee entrance would come in, instead of having to cut the third driveway?
No. There's not enough land to the left side or to push anything there, but what's...
So what is that white area today?
It's grass.
So on the right, it's undeveloped.
No, on the white, on the white.
That's a building.
That's existing building.
No, in front of it, in front of...
It's grass.
It's grass. So is there any thought...
There's a decent pitch.
Trees and grass. Unfortunately, some of, those are trees and grass. Unfortunately, some of the trees had to go. We still have some nice ones left.
But it would still lead into the same issue they have now, is if we didn't have the middle entrance and we brought the employee parking that way, we're still going to have the conflict of employee parking and truck traffic. Because they're still going to have truck traffic on that end of the building.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it would be worse, because you've got all, a number of trucks backing in, there's quite a few bays on that section.
Correct.
I think there's like, what, eight, maybe?
Six.
Six, yeah. I know there's quite a few bays on that end, and they're constantly backing in there. So that would be very close to where they would park. Just, how many employees do you currently have? I'm asking that in relation to cars.
Now, well, in the company?
Yes.
We have about 195 right now. About 85 of them are, 86 or 7 are here in Lunenburg. The rest of them are in Pawtucket, Rhode Island. Our second, our other facility is there, that specializes in coating products, go into the packaging, covers for books, packaging, Samsung phone boxes, last year, Harry Potter. We have about 90% of the book industry that uses that type of product between the two divisions. It, and the decision was made to move some of the products for finishing into the Lunenburg plant. We have a little space left in Rhode Island. Just made sense to do it up here, and so we've started actually to move manufacturing equipment into here, into our plant here, and that's up and running. It's, I must tell you that National Grid is very tough to deal with. Hard.
Try Unit2 instead.
Anyway, it, so we expect it's going to grow. We're very good at what we do in Rhode Island, probably the best in the world and the safest environmentally in the world. And we do great work here out of the plant in Lunenburg. Fast deliveries, quick turnarounds, a lot of inventory for orders that can run from $200 to $100,000 every once in a while. But we do, oh, so I've forgotten how many orders on a regular day. Quick, just for Lunenburg. Now, we've brought the passport material up, and we've started to finish and process the passport material. We do that for 57 countries in the world now, and that's growing. And it would be quite beneficial to have products in to a larger building where we can access them directly. We've been sending a truck back and forth between Leamester Warehouse four times a day for the last year and a half, and this will put an end to it, make us more efficient and safe.
I can understand that. The company I'm with, we have four different warehouses because of the same type of issues. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Just a comment. I think this, I think you're right, this looks like probably the best solution for what you need, but for a variance, if there's a, basically a reasonable alternative, I think you need to, there's a high standard of proof, and you have to kind of take that. So that would be, to me, maybe, what's it called, Leamester Shirley Road?
Yep.
Option.
Yep. And so we did, again, talk about that option with the planning board, and the planning board would be the one that basically gives the opinion on safety of entrances. And they wanted this entrance instead of that entrance on Leamester Shirley Road. And so as part of the process that we went through with the planning board, site plan review, that was brought up and basically kind of put away.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the standards for a variance.
Yep, and then that's why I gave you the responses to the standards for a variance.
But the standards for the variance are high. It's a high barrier. It's much more than a special permit. It's statutory in terms of soil conditions, topography, shape of the land.
And that's why I talk about shape of the land, and if, ideally, if the lot was square, the building would be square and it would work out better. We could have one loading dock, but we can't have that, that shape of a building because the lot's not a square lot. To be honest with you, this lot was created when there was an option to have more than two entrances on one street. It wasn't, it wasn't created when this bylaw was put into place. The planning board is the board that put this bylaw into place like two or three years ago. And they, they talked about it at their meeting, they said, yeah, we put this bylaw in for a reason, but this wasn't the reason they put it in. And they put their letter of support against, you know, behind this, this option. And so did the fire department. They'd rather see this than have us go out to Leamester Shirley Road. They don't want to have any traffic go out that way.
No, no, I understand that. Like I say, I go to work every day that way, and Leamester Shirley Road is the traffic...
It's a very tough corner on that.
It's a tough corner right there, because you've got a lot of trucks from Powell and different places coming.
But I'm not convinced that what you have here, I mean, everything that you're doing is self-inflicted. It has nothing to do with the actual shape of the property.
I was, I guess I'd have to disagree with you. It's not self-inflicted. There's no way we could put a square building on here and allow for a more circular circulation with regards to the product they make. If we could put a square building, we could have one loading dock.
So why couldn't you write where Dave was talking about that white area right now that's existing, grassland? Why can't that be a second egress?
It is a second egress. We do have a second egress right here. That's part of our second egress, and so, excuse me. So it creates the same issue we would have on the same other end. So, so what you're asking us to do is to do this, but instead of access our employee parking from this end, to access our employee parking from this end, it still conflicts with traffic, you know, trailer truck traffic. They're still going to have loading docks here, and they're going to have loading docks here. If the variance isn't granted, this is what's going to, they're going to continue in the same manner they're continuing today. They're going to construct the building and leave the design the way it is that is approved by the planning board. But the planning board and your fire department both have asked us to ask for a variance.
Well, with all due respect, they're not the granting approval board, you know, and they don't have the statutory requirements that we do, and the onus is on us to make sure that, you know, in granting the variance, that we're not, you know, deviating from the statutory requirements that we're supposed to be doing.
They're trying to make a second, they're trying to access the employee parking from here.
We don't own the property here.
No, no, no. They want to bring it up, they want to bring it up this way.
But this is where the big hill is.
Correct. And you would still bring it out to trailer truck traffic.
We're still, right. But that's a great big hill, which actually reaches full moon instead of looking like a big, long, red, major, we've got a hill here with probably trees on it, just cleaning that up, and in here, which breaks it up and takes... I think, I think the trees and the hill, which particularly left... I liked it when it was there even before this. In fact, I've lost half the view of my, my office. But I think it's much more efficient this way than that way. You'd have to level that whole, if you drive by there every morning, you know as you come by from where that original drive-in is, it slants up, got a nice mound in it, and it's actually, you've got some lovely trees on it.
You mentioned something about 100 parking spaces, and you said something about close to 100 employees.
No, someone asked the employees, we have 195.
Thank you.
Both plants.
Two plants.
Two plants. And we have about 85 here.
Okay, but is this sufficient parking?
By the zoning requirements. We're not asking for a variance from your zoning for parking requirements. We meet your zoning requirement for the number of parking spaces.
But it's sufficient for...
Yes.
The present and possible expansion.
Yeah, because you run two shifts, is that what you...
We're running two shifts now.
You're running two shifts. So the number of employees is also over the two shifts?
Thank you.
So you're at eight, less than, it's less than 100 currently at the site, but over two shifts.
Right, right. Are they two 12-hour shifts? Do you do 12, 28s?
We work two 12-hour shifts.
Okay.
So I guess my concern is, is that if there's a reason why that, the proposed employee parking, you know, you cannot go out that entrance. Obviously, to me, it's actually a rather busy section and busy area to come out that entrance there, between the trucks coming from Ghetto Drive and other areas. But if there was a reason, then there's still going to be that the other corner that you've developed on the, where the new, where the north side of the plant is actually a very tight corner for somebody to have to try to make. I'm looking at that corner, and that's, that's just seems to be of a concern. If I'm looking at a fire apparatus, if I'm looking for other things, I looked at your plans, and it looked almost like a fire apparatus was having to make a three-point turn to, to come down through that entrance if they had to.
Nope, if you look at the turn, it's not a three-point turn. It's a, the only time they'd ever make the three-point turn is if we left the plan the way I show right there, and when they're leaving the site. But they can swing in when they come into that area.
So, so if, if there is a truck on the nearest loading dock in there, you're saying to me that that's a sufficient amount of room for a fire apparatus to still get in there?
Yeah.
With employees parked there?
So as part of the site plan review, we had, and it shows right on the plan that you have there.
Yeah, exactly.
It showed the turning movements for the largest fire apparatus that the town has. And so if the loading dock's full, that doesn't play in the part with regards to accessing the front where the fire department asks for access. And so they asked us to show access to come in here, turn through here, and then turn down this way. If the third entrance isn't allowed, they're going to have to back into this area here and then back, then pull back out of this.
I understand. I'm just, to me, it's a concern of that, just that area, I just look at it as that that's a tough, that's a tough turn.
This turn right here?
Yeah.
Well, it's, again...
Considering where you have parking, where you're showing parking and everything, it looks like, it looks, even if, even in the depiction that you have in your, in the drawings here, it, it looks like it's infringing on the parking spots, as they're trying to make the turn.
No, and that's, actually, we had to make this area a little wider to make sure it didn't infringe on the parking spots. So this is actually wider than what's required by your zoning.
All right, but you see the lines going into the parking area, basically. I mean, it's not, I guess it's not ideal, but...
Again, the fire department signed off on the access point, no matter which option, with regards to that we have enough area for them to move their fire truck. Do they prefer this option? Definitely not, and they obviously submitted you a letter saying that they prefer the other option, the option that's in front of you tonight for a variance.
Okay, do we have any other questions from the board?
I just have a question for the board, not for the applicants. I just don't, I don't think, I don't think it meets the requirements for variance.
Okay.
They have strict requirements right here, soil, shape, and topography, and they just, they don't meet it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Can I, can I just, can we go through the items that I, and I guess my letter?
If you would, yes.
Can we, and I, I guess, just so we can have that conversation...
So let me just, just to clarify, the only reason you're here is because the planning board decided that they didn't want three egresses on one particular lot. Is that correct?
They cannot grant that.
But, but they put that in, they put those into their regulations, correct?
They put those in the regulations.
Right.
And then, and if you look at, I guess the, the best site to look at is the site across from the intersection of Pioneer Drive and Leamester Shirley Road, where there's the site there that has four or five curb cuts. And the, the traffic flow there gets ridiculous, because you're talking about a busy intersection with four or five curb cuts for the same business.
I understand, I understand what you're trying to do, and I understand what the planning board and the fire department, but, but from my perspective, from a regulatory and statutory perspective, I don't think you, the applicant, meet the requirements of a variance. I mean, it's different if it's a special permit, but it's not. And, you know, we don't have variances come before us very often, and it's a high barrier to meet.
I, I've done a number of variances, I agree with you. Some boards don't give rent them, some boards will, because if you meet the standards. I understand what you're talking about. So what I want to do is, can I just go through the, and we could talk about it real quick?
Go through the board, that's fine.
So when you talk about, it's a soil condition, shape, or topography. It doesn't have to be and, it says or. And so the hardship that we look at here is it's the lot shape. Like I said, if it was a square lot, it'd be easy to put a square building on, and we could put the circulation within the building such that we could only have to use one loading dock. But as Mr. Quill stated, they want to receive from one end and, you know, obviously ship from the other end. The way the building works to be efficient is no way to have that work within the building to be efficient. The best way to do it is to have the loading docks on one end, we, you know, bring in the material and out the other end. It's just the way the, the shape of the lot works, the shape of the building's going to be similar to the shape of the lot. And that's really the way we looked at this. Like I said, if we had a deeper lot, you know, square lot, we could put a square building in and have that circular pattern and come out the same loading dock. And that's where we look at that being basically a hardship of the lot being created the way it was created. Mr. Quill obviously bought the lot the way it was. And at the time, when he bought the lot back in, wouldn't you, 85, you said?
Eighty-five.
You could have as many accesses as you want onto Pioneer Drive. It wasn't even a thought at the time. And even when they started thinking about putting this addition on, the bylaw hadn't been changed. Wasn't even a thought that you couldn't do a third entrance out there. So when they had started thinking about the addition, it was always thought to put a third entrance on for the new loading docks. And again, like I said, we had a conversation, we were in front of the planning board, three or four meetings, back and forth, and they said if they could issue the permit with the three access points the way we show it, they would have done it, but they can't. They don't have the power to. You guys are the board to have that power. Again, you know, we could talk about financial hardship, you know, Mr. Quill has taken the chance here, but no matter what happens with the variance, he still wants to stay in Lunenburg. They looked at a number of sites, obviously, like you said, they have sites in Rhode Island. There are obviously financial hardships that he'd prefer to stay at this property now that he's putting that financial investment into the town of Lunenburg. So that's one of the things that he, you know, obviously looked at from that standpoint. And he's, he's making the commitment even before, if he doesn't get the variance, he's going to still commit to put that addition up and continue his property. C is, you know, relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons. We've already talked to the fire department. We already have the fire department saying that, you know, they don't see any kind of detriment to the public, public welfare, public good by the third entrance. You know, we've talked to the planning board about the third entrance there, the third entrance out on Lemmister Shirley Road. The planning board being the board that would look at from a safety standpoint of site distance and so forth of entrances, they look at this as a safer entrance also. I know the police department didn't issue a letter on this, but they didn't issue a letter negative either against, you know, when we had the proposal in front of the planning board. They didn't seem to carry the way because they didn't really have a, I guess, a dog in the fight on this one. And then the last one is, you know, the variance desired can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or the purpose of the zoning, Lunenburg zoning bylaw. And again, we felt strongly enough after having the conversation with the planning board, being the planning board, we're the ones that created the bylaw, that they still felt that, all right, maybe they should have put some language into the bylaw for an exemption of a longer lot. And they actually had that conversation, but they couldn't get enough members on board to put those exemptions in, that if you had 1,000 feet, say, of frontage, that you could put a third driveway in. And maybe they, down the road, will change that bylaw, but they didn't have the time to change the bylaw before they had to make a decision on this project. And again, like I said, they're the one making, that made the bylaw, and they're in support of this variance. And so we feel that if they're in support of the bylaw that they created, that it really isn't, you know, nullifying the intent of that bylaw. And so those are the four things, the four criteria that we looked at, and those are our answers toward those four, you know, four items. Not sure if that, I know you feel strongly other ways, but I just wanted to make our point.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to say in support of that, the, I don't know why a planning board would, would carve out a rectangular lot for an exception for a variance as, you know, as fitting within the shape, topography, or soil conditions. Seems probably what they did was they just did what most other towns do, is they just used the statutory language of Chapter 40, Section 10. It's almost identical.
And, and to be honest with you, and so that was one of the things we talked about is can eventually they change the bylaw with regards to access to allow for, with a longer lot, if you have more frontage, to make, you know, a number of entrances, pour the linear feet of frontage that you have. But that's, there's a process there, and it's, it can't happen overnight to get that bylaw changed. But it's something that they were talking about changing, that bylaw to allow for, you know, exemptions for lots like this. But without having a case in front of them, they, they didn't foresee that happening.
Okay.
I, I would just say that certainly when we bought the property, we were buying it in an industrial park. If I look across, as we said earlier, there were four cuts on the Lemmister Shirley Road, and right across the street from us, there are probably nine cuts in the frontage it's owned. It's F&amp;M Plastics, which bought out the old Corridated Plant, so I would say, one, two, there's three accesses in the first third of their property, and they go all the way down, almost, well, not quite to the corner, but there's, I would guess at least seven or eight entrances there. So I, and I understand that we now have a shopping mall at the other end, and it's not as quiet as it used to be, but it was still done as an industrial building, and so, I know our, I know our butters have more than two.
Okay. With that, normally I would open it up for the public comment at this time, but unless Gary has something to say, there is no other public here. So with that, I will bring it back to the board, and I will actually ask for a motion.
Can I, can I just finish up?
You may. I'm sorry, I didn't know you weren't done.
Oh, actually, I was, but there's something I've been meaning to ask about the, the location of the Northerly driveway, which would, which you've cut in, right?
Yep.
In response to the, or in, where is it in respect to the, the mobile station's driveway?
So here's the new entrance, here's the exit, entrance and exit for the, the mobile station. So it's as close as we could get to it, but we couldn't, because of the way the lot configuration is, we really couldn't straighten it out because of some drainage issues that we needed in there, so.
But that's the actual approved plan. The third driveway they're talking about is...
This is, this is already, this is already being built, this is what's going to be there.
Right, that's going to be...
Yes, yeah. And it was, and it, just so this board knows, the planning board did have an independent peer review, you know, by an engineer outside of, you know, look at this, look at the access points, look at the existing conditions with regards to, again, the gas station, to make sure that, they felt comfortable enough with the design.